Chairman Borger.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yeah.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
Do you please join me in standing for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dr. McGee, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna turn the mic over to Mrs. Rania Agia, who is our Director of Multilingual Learners here in the Wunsaket Education Department.
Good evening. In the Wunsaket Education Department, about 18% of our students are multilingual learners. Multilingual learners are students who come from various countries and are learning the English language.
Muy buenas tardes. Excuse me, I think the mic's off. ... de nuestros estudiantes del departamento de educación de Wunsaket son estudiantes multilingües. Los estudiantes multilingües son estudiantes que provienen de varios países y están aprendiendo el idioma inglés.
Throughout this school year, our multilingual learners work hard to develop their English language. It can take five to 10 years for multilingual learners to become proficient in the English language.
A lo largo del año escolar, nuestros estudiantes multilingües trabajan arduamente para desarrollar su idioma inglés. Los estudiantes multilingües pueden tardar entre cinco a diez años en dominar el idioma inglés.
Each year, our multilingual learners are assessed on the WIDA Access Assessment. The information from the assessment provides a snapshot of the student's language proficiency in the English language. In Rhode Island, a multilingual learner needs to earn an overall score of 4.8 on the assessment in order to exit out of MLL services.
Cada año, nuestros estudiantes multilingües son evaluados con el examen de acceso de WIDA. La información de la evaluación proporciona un resumen del dominio lingüístico del estudiante en el idioma inglés. En Rhode Island, un estudiante multilingüe debe obtener una apuntación general de 4.8 en la evaluación de acceso de WIDA para salir de los servicios del apoyo lingüístico del idioma inglés.
This school year, Wunsaket Education Department has 21 students exiting out of MLL services. Tonight, we award their accomplishments in achieving English language proficiency.
Este año escolar, el departamento de educación de Wunsaket tiene 21 estudiantes que salen del programa de aprendizaje multilingüe. Esta noche, premiamos sus logros al alcanzar el dominio del idioma inglés.
So we have several of our multilingual learners here. So congratulation to all of you for your hard work.
Aquí tenemos algunos de nuestros estudiantes multilingües y estamos aquí muy contentos de que estén aquí. Felicitaciones.
Thank you. I think we're going to call you up, and once you hear your name, you can head to the stage.
Yeah.
In front of the torch.
The root. Voila.
Nizar Wahbi. All right. Santiago Mendez Romo. Mariano Gonzalez Gonzalez. Leah Berdo Martinez. Look at that. Yeah, just that. Congratulations. Stay right over here. We're gonna take a picture. Right here. Pedro Barredo Lamar. David Sanchez. Adama Nadei.
Awesome smile.
Fabrini Andrade Brito. Melanie Ostrader Mendeville. Heidi Lopez Di Uquila. Alyssa Busarath. She's not here, but... Sofia Ramirez Jaromillo. Gustavo De Silva Pereira. Reiner Munoz Reynosa. Michael Vasquez Martinez. Gabriel Ars. Congratulations. You wanna take a picture?
Yeah, I was ready. Great.
Ashley Collado Munoz. Arya Stapleton. Jonathan Ledesma. Jassiel Alvarado. Joan Esti Christabel. Fabrina Andrade Brito. Fabrini Andrade Brito. Can we have all the students that just received their certificate come up here, please, for a picture?
Bang, got key. Bang, got key.
Shut it off. Doesn't matter. I don't talk.
All guys in the back?
You guys open your awards. There you go.
All right, on the count of three, say exit. One, two, three, exit. Nice job!
Hold on, hold on.
Both parents?
I take my chair off the way.
You can thank them.
My favorite pot.
Yeah, but the balloons. Oh, it's wonderful.
And now we'll go back to being empty again.
Kathy. I don't want Kathy to leave. Al.
Angie.
Can you let Kathy know? Tell Kathy not to leave.
Tell Kathy not to leave.
Sign anything before, Rob. Final thank you, whatever.
My brother sent me a message, and I opened it.
No kidding.
Show me the crowd at Foxborough.
Again, I want to thank all the teachers who really worked very hard with our students, and I want to congratulate all our award winners tonight. You did a fabulous job. Congratulations. Now we'll go into good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee during this meeting, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Is it on?
No, it won't.
No, it's not.
All right, can you hear me? All right, we're good. We're good to go. First off, I want to say congratulations to everyone that was here tonight to receive their certificate. I think that's great that you're learning another language, especially outside of your original language. Good job. Hello, everyone. I want to first start by saying thank you for both attending...
Would you give us your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I forgot that. I got a little excited, but the congratulations. Melissa Bubble, 650 Third Avenue, Wunsaket, Rhode Island. I apologize for that delay. I want to first start by saying thank you for both attending and making sure a meeting was conducted at each school as the community and I had requested. I commend the efforts in presenting comprehensive information about the schools and the proposed plans. I appreciate what you have pulled together in such a short time. I have heard that on the local radio station today, someone stated that per the request of the community, myself, and those who oppose the building of this mega school, who have signed my ongoing petition, there were few who showed. I addressed this concern during the one of the three meetings held yesterday and today. Some parents found the meeting notice too short, a point worth considering for a future communication with the community. They were notified last Friday. I was also told that Coleman, the Coleman meeting was too late for teachers, staff, and third shift working parents to attend. For instance, I spoke with at least three to four parents who informed me that their work shifts begin at 7:00 PM. When I brought these up to the people I spoke with at the meeting I attended, I was told it was okay for them to attend one of, bless you, one of the 5:00 PM meetings at the other schools. I want to point out that some of us still think differently, meaning though it was open to the public, many people thought that because their child goes to X school, they are to attend X school and not Y. Or if they live in an area of Y school, they are to go to Y school. I think that it is fair reasoning, I think there is fair reasoning to that. I don't disagree, but I am sure some people will. During the night I attended, I also assisted a local individual in need and provided ideas to improve the delivery of the requested information. Despite my opposition of this decision to build the new school, I ensured accurate information reached and reached them and conducted, connected them to, connected them with inappropriate contact for his questions. Now let's address what I heard at the meeting. Besides a lot of information, I, sorry, I'll start with the positive. There will be a light at the intersection to potentially control traffic at the already busy section of the road. Thank you for that information. Now I heard there is still an issue with transportation. No solid idea for, no solid idea for intricate questionings regarding the special needs kids besides all-inclusive classrooms and separate classrooms. I also see there's a lot of glass for this building, where there will be a lot of trauma, high behavior children in one area, and a balcony where the railing needs to be above normal height to hopefully deter any child from jumping over it. Remember who your audience is, children. They will try anything eventually. They'll probably even throw things off of the balcony. It was discussed that the high school football field will remain at Berryfield as well. It was said that someone thinks it is an issue for Coleman to walk to Dunn Park for Field Day, and that is one of the reasons to move the school, amongst others. It is healthy for kids to walk, and they love to walk to Dunn Park for Field Day. Now, because I have a limit of five minutes, I do have to end this, but I would like to make this point out, that someone has approached me about leaving early. These meetings are broadcasted on the radio and available on the Wunsaket School Committee Meetings YouTube channel for easy access. I want to reiterate, I am a busy mom, two jobs, one of which is taking care of autistic children, a business I run, two kids, and life, much like those who cannot do, cannot, or do not attend these meetings like I do. I make time for these meetings, and I do not always have time to stay. I should not have to explain myself, but also, tonight happens to be my wedding anniversary. But I choose to be here to both thank you for the meetings this week and address some takeaways I have. I have a huge event for work tomorrow that I do have to finish preparing for, starting my day tomorrow at 4:00 AM. Again, I don't just leave because I, I don't just leave just because. I also, much like you, have a life outside of advocating for our schools in this city. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Estelle Bubble, 648 Third Avenue, Wunsaket, Rhode Island. I am addressing you guys, all of you, tonight. I don't like what I see when some of the children are dressed for school, whether it's elementary or middle school. I don't get to go to the high school, so I see kids with their, they're like shorts, but they hang down behind, you know, past their butt, so their underwear is showing. And to me, when you go to school, it's like a job. The student, that's a job they have to do, is learn. They should not be wearing clothes that way, or jeans that have holes in them. That, to me, that's improper. I didn't get to read the dress code, but I will. But I'm urging everyone, we need to stick together on this, because, you know, as before, they had those bandanas tied around one leg and whatever, and however that worked. But we need to address this, because this could be like a gang thing or whatever. But they need to dress properly, you know, and that's my point. I've always dressed my children the way they're supposed to go if they were going to work. Nice and neat, and no holes, and, you know, nothing else showing. No pun intended. But have a good evening, everyone, and thank you. And I congratulate the class of 2024. It was amazing. I saw it. And all the kids tonight that received all their diplomas for speaking another language, because, you know, I know, that's not easy. I lost my French, and guess what? It's so hard to get it back. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee?
Good evening. Elizabeth Moylan, 151 Elmore Avenue, Wunsaket, Rhode Island. Thank you so much for having me here, and thank you again for hosting the community engagement meeting to discuss the new proposed school. Appreciate you hosting that, so we could talk with Ride, the school department, and also the builders and the architect. I do just have a few questions, well, statements that I'd like to address in regards to that. I am concerned about a traffic light, potentially on Smithfield Road with that traffic. Also, with being on Elmore Ave, it is...
Could you, could you bring the mic closer?
Sorry. Elmore Avenue is a connection street from Maury Street, and if you cut through the church parking lot, you can get to Smithfield Road. So I am, I do have concerns living on that street if that road will be used for people to cut through. Also have some concerns about busing costs increase since the school will be located abutting North Smithfield. The radius, I'm assuming, is cut in half since half the school, half the city is only able in that radius. The other half would be in North Smithfield. Also, administration costs, what will, what, how much does it cost for the, to run the three schools now compared to one mega school? In addition to building expenses and costs to operate those three buildings compared to one mega school? I don't know if those numbers are available. I looked on the website, didn't find anything. I also spent some time looking at the Wunsaket Education Department's plan for updating pillar number three, which includes diversity, equity, and inclusion. Do have some concerns regarding that since any low-income families that might not have transportation. If there's a community event hosted at that new school and the parents live further away, how would they be able to attend a school dance or extracurricular activities after school if they're reliant on busing to get their kids there typically? So I feel like that's not really falling into the equity and inclusion part. Also, since I live behind Berryfield on Elmore Avenue, my backyard's there, I've noticed, I don't know if, I brought this up to the building contractor and the architect. Sometimes in the winter, after it snows, and spring when it's heavy rains, Berryfield floods. And you'll see like a pond there, and I have pictures of Canadian geese swimming in there. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that and how we can mitigate any water damage. I do believe with the plans, the pre-K and K is almost like there's a trench. So as long as that there's proper drainage, I want to make sure that you're all aware of that. Also, I had some concerns about the roof. We're technically replacing these schools because of the flat roof. They did tell me it's kind of pitched, but I just want to make sure that that is addressed, and we won't have to replace or repair the roof because it's not steep enough, being in New England. And I'd also just like to give a shout out to CCF and Mr. AJ. My kids go to the programs after school. They participated in the, the school break programs as well as, in addition to the summer program. So that's a great program, and I would like to thank you for hosting that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the school committee this evening? Seeing and hearing none. Dr. McGee, I'll turn it over to you for recognitions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me first start by congratulating our amazing students this evening who were awarded their certificates. It was an honor to, to see them here this evening, and I want to thank Ms. Agia, and I want to thank all of the teachers across the district who work very hard every day with, with all of our students, but especially with our students this evening. And they're certainly a part of, of their success. On June 7th, last Friday, the Wunsaket High School class of 2024 graduated. There were 235 Wunsaket High School graduates this year. I want to congratulate them. I want to congratulate them. That, that particular class started their high school careers during COVID. And the one thing, and I, and I mentioned this during my speech, was that they really cultivated this community. They, they, and when I say cultivated this community, they were, they were a part of this community in many, many different ways, whether it was through volunteering their time and efforts, whether it was being a part of organizations within the community, within the school district. That's where they supported their, their peers through the various mental health initiatives and programs that we have. So I just want to congratulate them again and wish them the best of luck and health in their future. Next, I am going to announce the, the One Socket Education Department, 2024, 2025, actually 2023, 2024 Employees of the Year. I'm going to announce each of them and, but before I do that, I just want to say that these, these, these employees will be recognized that as we typically do at a school committee meeting in September. The Teacher of the Year, the One Socket Education Department, is Danielle Dorado. Danielle is an English teacher at One Socket High School. The Administrator of the Year happens to be here this evening. Surprise. She happens to be here to see, one of the many reasons that, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to do a little riff here. But one of the many reasons that Kathy Cravalo, Principal of Pothier Citizens Elementary, was, was named Administrator of the Year is because she's here tonight to, to support some of her students who received certificates. And that just goes to show the person Kathy is. They were not all her students, but some of them were here and she was here to support them. So I want to congratulate Kathy on being named Administrator of the Year. Secretary of the Year is Amanda Field from Citizens Memorial Elementary School. And the Custodian of the Year is Stephanie Macacy from Pothier Citizens. And again, these employees, these Employees of the Year will be recognized at a special school committee meeting when we return in September. I want to just briefly go over some, some logistics this summer with respect to summer school programming and events. Summer school programming, unfortunately, it's not as robust as it's been in the past because prior to this summer, we've been able to use our S R three funds, S R two and S R three funds. But we still are offering summer programming. The start date is July 8th and it goes through August 2nd. Summer elementary programming will be Monday through Friday at Globe Park Elementary School. And that's going to be from 8:30 to noon time. Extended school year for our students with I E Ps who have E S Y in their, in their I E Ps will be Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. That will also be located at Globe Park and Governor Pothier Elementary Schools. And that will run from 8:30 to noon time on those days. E S Y Extended School Year for the middle and high school will run Monday through Friday. That will be located at Villanova Middle School as well as the high school. And each day they will run from 7:45 until 11:15 PM. We continue our wonderful partnership with Connecting for Children and Families. Their programming for our students begins on July 8th and runs through August 16th, and that's going to be Monday through Friday. They have a variety of, of camps that they are offering. The first is Camp Discovery, which is for grades K through two. That's going to be located at Citizens Memorial and it's going to run from 8:00 AM to noon time each day. Chilling and Skilling for grades three through five will run from 7:30 to 2:00 PM at Villanova Middle School. Get Connected, which is for students in grades six through eight, that's going to be at Villanova Middle School as well. And that's going to go from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then Stay Connected is on hold until CCF secures grant funds, but that will be for grades nine through 12, excuse me, which will be located at One Socket High School from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And I, I suspect we're going to be getting more information from CCF about the Stay Connected opportunity for our students. So once we get that information, I'll be sure to share it with, with families and with the community. And lastly, I just, as this will be our last school committee meeting of the school year, I just want to wish all of our students and staff and their families a very safe, healthy and happy summer vacation. And look forward to seeing everyone again in late August. And with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee, that concludes my recognitions and announcements. The last day of school is Monday, June 17th.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Anyone have any comments, questions for him? I'll make a motion then to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next, I'll make a motion to approve the May 22nd, 2024 Open Meeting Minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any changes, deletions, corrections?
Good.
Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Does anyone want to take any item out of the consent agenda for discussion? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Our student representative will start attending our meetings regularly, beginning with the first meeting in September. Dr. McGee, I'll ask you to give us your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Start with Personnel Matters Update. You have here on your, in your file, you have, we, you have the extracurricular positions. These are primarily summer programming positions, stipend positions that we have. As you can see, there, there are many positions and stipend positions, I should say, that we have for this summer. Second on my agenda for my report, a brief update. I'm going to give you a brief update on the state local education aid. We're very fortunate to, to receive an extra $150,000 from the City of One Socket for our, our fiscal aid as we move forward. And the, the key part to that is the $150,000 continues from year to year. So they, they have, have met maintenance of effort, which is really important as we receive funds from the city. The, the state, the governor's initial budget, as we talked about many times, was shorting the One Socket Education Department approximately $1.7 million. Since the, the, the final budget, which is yet to be approved by the, by the Senate or the House, and the House is providing One Socket with an increase in $2.2 million. So hopefully the state and the House will both pass that amended budget from the, from the governor and we will, you know, we'll, we'll have some more state funds to, to provide the opportunity to bring back some of the positions, which we were unfortunately having to cut due to the fiscal situation. With that, that concludes my superintendent's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee may have at this time.
Just a comment slash question. When I look at the personnel, a lot of these are being funded with S R funds.
That's correct.
And these are going to end in September. So next year, I would imagine that quite a few of these are going to disappear.
They will, so.
Looks like more than half are going to be gone.
They, they will and we're going to need to use the funds that we've used in the past, which are Title I funds. So, so yes, that is correct. Though the S R funded stipend positions in the summer will not be able to be maintained because we're not going to have those funds.
In terms of the state budget, I know the House has approved. They sent the budget to the Senate. It's the Senate we're waiting for and that should be this week. And then it goes to the ethical media and then it gets approved and we go from there. But from what I understand from newscasts, nobody's expecting any change, especially to the education budget and that'd be great.
We're, we continue to be hopeful.
Yep. Any, any comments for Dr. McGee? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file Superintendent's Report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa to give us the Health and Wellness Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Health and Wellness Subcommittee met for the final time this school year on June 3rd, 2024, right here at the Hamlet School. We began by approving our minutes from our March, March 18th meeting. And then I provided a few updates to the committee. First of all, we, we thanked Joanna Raymond, who had been our representative for URI SNAP Ed program, particularly the last two years at our schools in Harris and Citizen Pothier. She has left to go to another job. And we met her replacement. Her name is Kate Balistraci and she was serving as the new interim URI SNAP Ed person that we would maybe be working with next year. I also updated the committee that we have a change and you'll see it voted on tonight. We have a change in our food provider at the school, in the school district. We are moving from Sedexo to Chartwells beginning July 1st. With that in mind too, also, Chartwells will be having an opening cookout as we do every summer and it'll be after July 4th, I believe, in the Veterans Park. Be a great turnout. And obviously that's where our students will, will get lunch every day throughout the summer, as well as in the schools, as well as in the schools that, that are open. So Chartwells will be providing summer lunch. Also, so at our meeting, we, Karen Weatherall from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition announced that the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition Breakfast will be October 23rd in Warwick. And usually the Health and Wellness Subcommittee buys a table and most of us are there for that, for that meeting. And we will be again, hopefully this year. Also, she also discussed about a new, a new health curriculum from RIDE that'll be slowly implemented in our phys ed classes throughout the year. We also, we also talked about an additional job description through our Project Aware S E L program. There's going to be a new coordinator for strategic partnerships and collaborations. And that is a great addition to the, to the program that we have. And finally, we looked at and adopted our policy, Health and Wellness Policy. Few minor changes. URI SNAP Ed program made some additions that were necessary. And Karen Weatherall also checked and updated some state laws for us. So later on, later on in this meeting, we will be voting for that policy. And those were the two main changes from the present policy. We, let's see. I think, I think that's it. At our next meeting, when we come back in the school year, will be at the end of September. So I believe, unless Mrs. Costa wants to add anything, I believe that captured our Health and Wellness Meeting of June 3rd.
The only thing that I just want to add is with us switching from Sedexo to Chartwell, the free lunch program is still staying. It's not going anywhere. That's still going to stay, even though we're switching food companies. It's the only thing I had.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the Health and Wellness Update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Notorianni to give us the Technology Facilities Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just, I'd like to point out to the committee, the memo that I posted this evening that you see before you actually cut off the last page, some additional notes that I'll be reading off. But just to start off, as of today, we have 37 work orders for the Technology Department. We're working to resolve those as quickly as possible and they are coming in rapidly at the end of the school year. But everyone's working exceptionally hard to balance that with the end of the year activities in terms of technology support. For example, at the high school, they had Savoy's graduation and we had someone there. We had someone at Globe for the community presentation and we also had technology support this evening. In addition to that, the data staff continued to provide support for our systems and applications. They specifically are working on the initial stages of the future student scheduling, along with preparing for end of year processes. State reporting will be coming to a close later here in June and we'll be signing off on state reports and reviewing the data with Dr. McGee and my colleagues on the admin team. Student registration, as of today, we have approximately 250 grade K registrations, which is trending slightly higher than at this point in time last year. I believe we are at around 224 right about now. So we are trending higher in the kindergarten registrations, which we're happy to see. Facilities custodial services, as of today, we have 202 work orders in the system. Approximately two thirds of them, or 126, are assigned to our internal staff, meaning they're things that we can do in-house. The remaining work orders are things that are assigned out to the plumber, the HVAC vendor or RISE Engineering in terms of lighting configuration. As for transportation, tomorrow I will be having a meeting with Durham School Services to coordinate the summer transportation. Several of my colleagues on the team will be meeting just to make sure that we have all the transportation squared away, which will be E S Y for special education, along with the summer programming that we've established at several key locations, the high school, the middle school and Globe Park Elementary School. In terms of the SROs and school safety, we had a meeting today with the Socket Police Department. So over the summer, we're going to coordinate an active shooter training here at Hamlet Middle School. It's part of the training process for the police, but it also welcomes their entire staff here to this building and training in one of our schools as to how they would respond. They'll be conducting the training here. It will occur over the summer when students and staff are not in the building, provide open space for them to explore the entire campus. Additionally, in conjunction with Dr. McGee and the admin staff, we've talked about or discussed the refresher training for Alice for the next school year. You may recall that initiative was put forward for this school year and we're already talking about the refresher training, along with new training for any new staff that will be brought on board. And then the part that would kind of get cut off would just some of the projects over the summer and into the fall. Starting with the High School Career Tech Center, all furniture in classrooms, non-student furniture, because we already replaced the student furniture, but all furniture in the classrooms, such as student desks, chairs, filing cabinet, storage, are going to be replaced over the summer months. That's for all classrooms. The Library Media Center, all bookcases will be replaced. There'll be carpeting repairs and touch-up painting. The cafeteria will receive new furniture. There'll be installation of a new wellness center in room 117. In addition to that, and Mr. Perrier spearheaded the project along with Dr. McGee, the auditorium renovations have started to kick off and those will occur between July 2024 and February 2025. The gymnasium will have experience renovations, which will have new paint on the walls, replacement windows, new bleachers, locker room renovations, new water fountains indoors. And that will occur between June of this year, towards the end of this month through till December 2024. The trans-pro theater arts room and the music room will all receive new windows similar to the ones in the gymnasium. They're the same type of window structure. Science labs, which we started in the fall, all science labs, B1 through B15, I apologize, will be completely renovated by the end of July, which means there'll be all new plumbing, all new cabinetry, along with all new furniture, lighting and ceilings. There'll be a new greenhouse. We're hopeful to have a new greenhouse in place sometime in the fall. I don't have an exact timeframe. It'll be purchased with the Career Tech Center. At Savoy Elementary School, they are slated to receive complete renovations of the Library Media Center between August and September, which will include new furniture, bookcases, paint, carpeting and VCT tile, along with a new circulation desk. At both the Pothier Building and the Harris Elementary School, the gymnasium between April of this year and through till August will receive new painting on the walls and the ceilings in the gymnasium, new backstops for the basketball courts, new divider nets, safety mats on the walls, sound panels, a new floor and new storage. The Library Media Center will receive a touch-up for all the ceilings, paint on the walls, carpeting, VCT and new furniture. And the cafeteria should have already been both painted. They'll have new ceiling repairs and sound panels. So we've got quite a bit of activity for the facilities department and contractors for, well, the foreseeable future. So that concludes my report for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Notorianni, can you give us at least a sketch of, you, you listed we're going to get furniture and a lot of projects. Which ones are S R funded? Which ones are from our capital budget? And I know, I think the auditorium, that's a special fund that we received. Can you give us an idea what you got since you summarized all of that?
So the vast majority of this work has been a combination working with Mr. Perrier and Dr. McGee and RIDE. It's a combination. It's a combination of ESAR funding. So ESAR funding has basically taken care of all of the furniture and the fixtures in the classrooms. The science labs were funded with a $500,000 capital grant, I might be slightly off, but from the state, to renovate the labs, and we combined it with the ESAR funds to produce more. So you may recall, $500,000 was supposed to renovate two labs, but because we did a lot of the work managing in-house between myself and Dr. McGee and Brad, we have had endless meetings with the architects and engineers, we were able to stretch the $500,000 grant with ESAR funds and do all of the science labs. So there's ESAR funding for the furniture there. There is Facilities Equity Initiative money, which is funding the renovations for the elementary schoolwork. So all the painting, rehab work, flooring, tiles, window fixtures, stuff like that is out of the Facilities Equity Initiative, which also is doing the high school gymnasium and locker rooms. And then the furniture, the bookcases, gym storage, things of that nature were funded out of ESAR, because we could buy furniture from that. And then the auditorium project, I believe, and I can't hold me this to Mr. Perrier, I wish he was here, I think it's 1.3 million or 1.5 million for the auditorium project.
That's the number.
Yep. So that's what we're looking at. And that's in addition to, which we didn't get into, additional grant money for the HVAC systems at the high school and stuff, but that's not finalized.
I wanted you to go over this because I just didn't want anybody to think this is coming out of the general fund. It's not. It's coming out of ESAR and some grants that we received.
Yes. I would say, at this point, with the exception of maybe a $35,000 to $40,000 investment on behalf of the district, we were able, with Brad's financing plan, we were able to leverage, I don't know, I would say, I'd venture to guess this was several million dollars, without, Brad could certainly tell you better, several million dollars worth of renovations for an investment of maybe about 50 grand on our part.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? This is Kapiskas.
Just one comment, and actually a question. With regard to the active shooter training that's going to be going on at the middle school, are you going to announce that when that is occurring? Because otherwise, you and I both know social media is going to blow up. There's a shooting at the middle school. I'm just hoping there'll be some publicity connected with that, so people don't freak out.
I appreciate that question, Mrs. Kapiskas. So this morning, in fact, we met with Captain Picard and Lieutenant Richardson from the Windsocket Police Department to go over exactly how we are going to roll this plan out. So the initial factor was identifying dates and times in the building where no one would be present. The Windsocket Police Department will be utilizing the city's alert system, which geographically can notify within a vicinity of, I don't know how many miles around this campus location, a notification to anyone that signed up for information and alerts. So they'll be notifying the members of the public that they'll be doing active shooter training. In addition to that, I met with Dr. McGee, and at Dr. McGee's insistence, aside from having nobody present here in this building, we're also going to make sure that if there are any students next door, even though it's next door, we want to make sure that the noise doesn't echo out and scare anyone there in case anyone happens to be on that side of the campus. We will also be sending out messaging through the school messenger app that we control here in the district, and the police will be providing signage outside of the exterior of the building, along with cones, so that people, if they're driving by, should be able to see the sign and know that there's police training going on. So I'm hopeful that, based on all of those planning things that we did today, that the word will get out there, and people will not be afraid or think something's going on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yeah, the last thing we want is a whole bunch of police cars, because you know the neighborhood and the whole city. I agree with Mrs. Kapiskas.
That was a conversation that Dr. McGee and I had, well, we had it just yesterday, as a matter of fact, before we had the meeting today. That was exactly...
Yes, we did. I recently read of, I don't recall if it was in New Hampshire, somewhere, where there was an active shooter training, and they, the facility that they utilized had students that were there on some type of a field trip, and no one noted, and they were never notified. So when Mr. Notariani and I were talking about it, I said, you know, we need to make sure that no one is in those buildings. I don't care what the reason is, they're in there. And so, you know, Mr. Notariani took that and, you know, did a great job of communicating it to the police. So, yeah, we are making sure.
Are you also concerned about teachers and custodial staff to be in the buildings as well?
Custodial staff will be in the building. They will be silent participants in the sense that they will at least be aware of the activities. Their role will be to make sure staff do not come in the building. Outside of this project, on the 26th of June or the 27th of June, the FOB access to this building will be heavily restricted to just Door 3, to provide an opportunity for staff to come in for PD. And then, right after the PD sessions are over with, the FOB system will be shut down across the district, so that our custodians will have some uninterrupted time to clean, thoroughly clean, all of our buildings. So staff should not be able to get in unless somebody were to let them in when these events are occurring, and the police have been instructed to turn anyone away.
The staff will be told this is happening as well.
They will be part of the school message. The school message alert will go across the city. I'd also like to thank Lieutenant Richardson. He did a wonderful job helping to plan this out, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one other follow-up on that skate park, too. You're going to have to make sure that access is restricted to that, because it's not really part of the school, but...
That is a very, very good point, a very, very valid point, Mrs. Kapiskas. I will notify the police, because the skate park, contrary to popular belief, does not fall under the jurisdiction of the school department. I do not have, while I, or myself with Dr. McGee, can shut down a building or a location, that's not our property, you know, under our care and control. So I'm assuming, but that being said, I will still make it a point to mention that the city perhaps might want to suggest that. I think they're going to, because when they rolled out their planning, they notified they wanted this building because it was close proximity to the substation across the street. But I will raise that as an issue, just in case.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a technology update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into new business, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the health and wellness policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Vice Chair Burke, you want to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, I mentioned it earlier, but basically, it's the same policy with some small additions by the URI SNAP Ed Program on some nutritional information and an update on some state laws as they apply to health and wellness. That's the only changes in this policy.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the annual summary report of Windsocket Special Education Local Advisory Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, we'll discuss it and approve it. Mrs. Kapiskas, you've done a tremendous job being the chairman or what you call it. Hopefully, you be replaced as the temporary chair.
Acting chair.
Acting chair. All I know is you've done a fabulous job with this group for years upon years. You're to be commended, you and the folks that do participate. Unfortunately, it's not as many as we'd like, but you've really held it together, and you've done some good work there. Would you like to address this item, this report? It's a good report.
Not really. I don't really have much to say beyond what the report is. It's basically a report that summarizes what we've done over the course of the 2023-2024 school year. It includes a copy of every agenda, a copy of my notes, which is my report back to the school committee. And now that I have an official secretary, her notes are enclosed as well when she was appointed. It's just a summarization that my bylaws require me to report back to the school committee, so I'm doing this in my capacity as acting chair of the CLAC and not as a member of the school committee. Our attendance has been poor. One to two parents at most. We have certainly excellent attendance from administration. We have at least eight or nine members of administration present at every single CLAC meeting. I don't know why more parents don't take advantage of the opportunity to ask questions, get information directly from the source. But we're not alone. As you know, there was a recent state law passed that's requiring districts that don't have an active lack to take certain action to create an active lack, or at least make people aware that this should exist in the district. I don't know how you can mandate people to attend a lack meeting. Wish I did, because I would mandate all the special ed parents to attend. It just doesn't happen. But we're not alone, because every year, the CLAC directors get together, CLAC chairs get together at a meeting called SHON, Special Education Advisory Network. We meet twice a year. That meeting used to have easily 80 or 90 people in it. This last meeting that we had in May, less than 30.
Wow.
So we are not the only district suffering from this. Ms. Morell and I have discussed various things we can do to try to address attendance, perhaps return to some in-person meetings. Frankly, I think that's going to have a negative impact on attendance, as opposed to a positive, especially for parents with special needs children, it's much easier for them to log on and be home. But we're going to continue to discuss various options, maybe reduce the number of meetings. That kind of scares me, because people are going to forget, is this a CLAC meeting or isn't it? Is this the right month? I'd almost rather stay with what we're having and very short meetings if there aren't people there, but at least keep consistency in that date. But my advert that I give at every CLAC meeting, and I'll take the opportunity now, since I'm speaking as acting chair, I'm looking for my replacement. I've been doing this for 19 years. I'm going into my 20th year. The son that I did this for turned 23 today. He's my special ed student. So we are now, I am beyond not having a student matriculating in the schools with an IEP. And it really should be a parent who does have a student matriculating in the schools, because you have feet on the ground. I don't really have contact with special education teachers, special education TAs. With the director, yeah, the assistant director, yeah, but not feet on the ground. And it really should be a parent who has feet on the ground, but somebody who's not going to be argumentative over every single thing, because when I first joined the CLAC, that's what it was like, and that's how I ended up as chair. But I would love to see someone else take it over, someone newer, younger, fresher, and who has a child, who's going to be in the system for a significant period of time. That's who you really need to lead your CLAC. And I've offered before, and I'll offer again, I'll do everything I can to help the person. Did have a replacement very briefly, less than six months, did all that for her, she still decided to resign. It's really not as much work as it sounds like, but that's my plug, to try to find a CLAC chair to replace me. If not, I'll be back in September. And I'd just like to report, I provide the summary report to everyone, because it's required by our bylaws, but the CLAC still does not receive any funding from the district, because we don't request any. And not meeting in person, let me tell you, my boss is saving an awful lot of money on copy costs, because I copied everything in my office. So he's very grateful that we're not spending a lot of money on copies. But I thank you, all those who did attend, especially the staff members, the administrators, Dr. McGee, Brad, Al, Dr. Holt, Sudirizo, Dawn Morell, I mean, everyone around this table, I could name all these people that have attended. I hope I'm not missing anybody. Rania, Mr. Ard, I'm trying to think of who else, but there's been a lot of people that have attended, and I appreciate that, and I hope you'll still consider attending, hopefully, when we meet virtually, because it's a lot easier for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kapiskas. Any comments, questions? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Abstain.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve to rescind the acceptance of bid 24-07 on April 24, 2024, by the school committee of the bid with Chartwell's to enter into an agreement to provide food services through Windsocket Education for the 2024-2025 school year. Could be long enough. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman, so I would just say to the committee that it's in the best interest of the Windsocket Education Department to rescind the acceptance of bid 2407 and to participate in the statewide contract for food services.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions?
Well, just a note, then, as you're talking about, Dr. McGee, item number three and item number four go together.
Correct.
So one will lead to the other one.
Yes.
Will lead to the other. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the Windsocket Education Department contract with Chartwell's under the RIDE statewide local food services program. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Mr. Chairman, so the Windsocket Education Department, our recommendation to the committee is to accept the bid from Chartwell's Food Services at this time.
Anyone, any comments?
It's under the RIDE.
It is.
It's under their umbrella.
It's under, yes, correct.
Their program.
That's correct.
Different program.
Yes.
I guess there are various advantages to that, to go that way.
There are, yes. It's going to save us some money.
Any questions or comments? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the bid 25-01, School Dentist. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Windsocket Education Department School Dental Services, this particular vendor is the vendor that we have had as our district dentist for many years. We're satisfied with the service he provides to our students, so it is my recommendation to the committee that we continue that service.
Any questions, comments? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 25-02, School Physician. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger, my recommendation to the committee is to continue with the physician, who for a few years now has been serving as the school physician for the Windsocket Education Department.
And good comments?
And we have had a very good relationship with this physician. She is, she works very well with our head of our nursing services here in the district. So we're very pleased with the service that the physician provides the children of the district.
Any questions, comments? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 24-09, Before and After School Child Care Services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the committee has, in your folder here, we, I am recommending two before and after school childcare service providers to the committee this evening. The first is Kids Club, and that would be, Kids Club is an organization that we've been working with for decades here in Windsocket, have a very good relationship. They provide very good services to our students and their families, both before and after school, as well as over vacations there. The Kid, the Kids Club would be located at three schools, Pothea, Vernon, and Globe. And then the second, that bid that I'm recommending to award to is Alphabet Education. And we, I am recommending that they be, their location would be at Leo Savoy Elementary School. Currently, we, we have, currently Leo Savoy does not have a before or after-school vendor there servicing.